Good evening. Can I have your attention, please? This is the Human Services Equitable Development Renters Rights Committee of the Seattle City Council, and we are in City Hall Chambers. And it's 6:30 PM on September 23rd, 2019. I wanted to start by paying our respects to the Duamish people and to all the Coast Salist nations. And recognize that we've been joined here in the audience by King County Councilmember Larry Gossett. Thank you for being here. We have one item agenda for the committee tonight, and that's on renters' rights, and specifically to go over the draft legislation on rent control that we have put forward through our movement and that my council office is a part of. We have not yet been joined by other councilmembers. We have welcomed them, and I hope we will be joined by them. But even if we are not joined by them tonight, we will continue with our meeting, and then we will continue our conversation with councilmembers. Before beginning the public testimony section of the meeting, I wanted to invite all the tenants from the Chateau Building Struggle to stand here so that you can receive recognition from everybody in the movement for the incredible breakthrough victory that you have achieved. Please wait till all the tenants come up here and then give them, hopefully, what will be a resounding applause. Roselle Renee. We wanted to do this not only to give the tenants a wider recognition for their valiant struggle against $185 million company Cadence Real Estate, but also so that everybody else who's watching us knows that if you are a tenant who is being exploited by a corporate landlord and want to get organized to win justice, you can. Because they did it, and they won, you can too. I wanted to thank also and recognize particularly all the community organizers in my office, but particularly on the Chateau Struggle. I hope you will join me in giving an applause to Jonathan Rosenbloom and Sasha Solmer, who were on the forefront of the struggle. And please join me in also recognizing the other community organizers and policy analysts in my office, Ted Verdon, Adam Zimkowski, and Nick Jones. And the number of people and organizations who played a leading role in working alongside the Chateau tenants to win this victory is too numerous for me to take your time on, but I wanted to just say that this struggle was supported not only by tenants' rights organizations, but by labor unions, faith leaders, and many other people who care about affordability in the Central District. Next, I wanted to invite the members of the Superintendent Student Advisory Board of the Seattle Public School District. If you want to come to the microphone. This is Fran Shannon and Talia Glick, who co-authored a statement, a letter to the Superintendent Juno, urging them to excuse absences for students who wanted to courageously participate in the climate strike, youth climate strike on Friday, and also Angelina Riley, who read that letter to the school board. So can we give them a hand? Do you want to station the audience for just a second so they can see your faces? They are here, and they will say it in their own words, but they are here because they know that we cannot possibly wage a battle against the climate catastrophe that looms over us and win a Green New Deal unless that also includes the fight for affordable housing. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Fran Shannon, a senior at Nathan Hill High School. We will be talking about our roles in the climate movement before connecting it to why we need rent control. I co-wrote a letter to the superintendent and school board to urge them to excuse all absences of students participating in the climate strike. The school district failed to excuse these absences despite demands from the Student Advisory Board, the Seattle City Council, and teachers across the district. It's really disappointing for our voices to feel unheard, but we would like to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Sawant for her outspoken letter and our support. It's not often that our elected officials actually care what the young people think, so it's really great to have her encouragement and support. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angelina Riley, and I'm a junior at Rainier Beach High School. Activism, as Greta Thunberg said so eloquently, works. People mobilizing and coming together to make a change has worked for centuries and will continue to work. I live in the South End. 98118 was known as the most diverse code in the country, but that is no longer the case. Every year, my black and brown peers disappear one by one. Some of my friends have moved south, Federal Way, and Kent, but some of my friends live outside and in and out of shelters. The United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights states in Article 25, "Everyone has the right to standard of living adequate for the health and well-being of themselves and for their family, including food, clothing, housing, medical care, etc." This is self-explanatory, but it seems as though certain demographics still have to fight for this. I don't want to see anyone else affected by issues made by choices because they were based on money and that seem so much more appealing than health, choices made because those in power continue to prioritize wealth. My pain, the pain of my communities, the pain of my peers, are all matched in combating this climate crisis and this local rent crisis. And so it is said, when we fight, we win.
My name is Talia Glick, and I'm a junior at Ingram High School. And I'm here today to speak as a student representative, first of all, in support of the climate strike, which we are really so grateful to have the city council's support of, but as well to advocate for rent control. I know these issues may seem unrelated to people who don't have a lot of knowledge on them, but I want to make it really clear that climate justice and housing justice are directly linked. The city council was supportive of the youth strike, something that I know myself and all my peers are very grateful for. This support means that the city council has explicitly acknowledged the danger that the climate crisis poses to our collective futures. That danger is tangible and real, and it is here in our own city. For the last few years, every summer, Seattle has been engulfed in smoke. And you all know as well as I do how frustrating it is to cover your mouth with a bandana every time you go outside, which we all avoid doing. In a city with one of the highest rates of homelessness in the country, the members of our community who are homeless are put at a much higher risk than the rest of us by being forced to remain in dangerous air quality. Throughout the past years, a number of our community members have actually died because of this air quality, something that would not be the case if they had access to affordable housing and were able to remain inside. This is just one of the examples of the threats that the climate crisis poses to all of us, and especially to those who live on the streets. The danger of the climate crisis is non-negotiable. The partisanship of rent control must take a backseat, and our city council must prioritize the lives of its citizens. Without rent control, people will continue to die on the streets. We need rent control now. It is a crucial step forward in the fight for climate justice, something that the city council has already explicitly stated its support of. Passing rent control would fundamentally impact the lives of so many people in our beautiful city, allowing for everyone to have a safe and affordable home and not just the wealthy. It would save lives. It is not a political issue. It is a right and a necessity. What do we want?
Rent control!
When do we want it?
Now!
We will start public testimony now. Thank you to Fran, Talia, and Angelina for those eloquent remarks. I just wanted to say two things. One is, we usually have a two-minute public comment, but since it is 6:40 at this moment, and we want to get to the legislation itself, we thought one minute is appropriate. And obviously, one minute is never enough, but I would really appeal to everybody to keep your comments within a minute so that we can hear from everybody and continue with the rest of the meeting, because I know you all have personal responsibilities or perhaps even work to get back to. And apologies to the Vietnamese elders who came here tonight. We welcome you, but unfortunately, we realize that the interpretation equipment has had technical problems. But if you, as Vietnamese members of the community, are here to speak in public testimony, then we do have a person who can translate your comments for the rest of the public. So I'm going to call out three or four names at a time. I'd really appreciate it if you could just sort of line up here so we don't waste time in people getting out of their seat and coming to the microphone. Our first three speakers are Julissa Sanchez, Kim Lungren, and Velma Chaney.
Good evening. My name is Julissa Sanchez. I'm with the tenants' union, and I'm the South King County organizer. I want to speak about displacement.
And can you hold up the microphone?
Right here? Okay. I want to speak about displacement. It seems to be a reoccurring theme in the lives of people of color and beyond. My mother was displaced from her lands, her homeland, in Sinaloa, and we ended up in the Central District of Seattle, 22nd and Yessler, where I grew up, and the community was so beautiful, and it was diverse immigrant and refugee communities and the black community. And soon after, we created such a beautiful, diverse community, we were displaced. And along with mostly all the people of color, oh god, that count, that makes me nervous. Okay. So I'm just telling, I get calls from people who are in crisis of being displaced and homeless every day because they received a $200, $300, $500 increase in rent. And now, as our students have said, people of color are being pushed to Kent, are being pushed to Federal Way, where they have less rental tenant protections. We do not have a space in the city of Seattle where there is, where people of color are inclusive, because if we want to solve the problem of poverty, we need to start with rent control. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Lungren. Do you hear me?
Can you speak closer to the microphone, please, Kim?
My name is Kim Lungren. I'm the, I mean, I'm a Seattle resident, and I'm coming here with the group of the Vietnamese seniors here. I would like to share some ideas, some thoughts, some thinking. First, I want to congratulate Chateau Apartment tenants. They fight really hard with councilmembers. So we wouldn't follow their stuff. We fight, we will win. Another thing I would like to say is our group here, they're on a senior. Some of them, like myself, still working, and some of them already retire. The retirees, they have a very fixed income, and it's really hard for them. They get a fixed income, but the rent, everything, getting higher and higher every year. So it's really difficult. I myself go into, I can be retired soon, but I don't want to think about that because, you know, thinking about moving to a place that I can afford or I cannot afford because of the rent, it's getting higher and higher every year. So we need, what we need, rent control. What we want? Now! Thank you.
Next is Velma Chaney. And before Velma Chaney goes, I wanted to read out a few more names. Sean Hostet? I'm sorry, I'm... Velma, Sean, then Dove John, and then Imogen Williams. Go ahead. You might want to use this other microphone, because that's too short.
Okay. Hi, my name is Velma Chaney, and I am a social service worker in downtown Seattle. When me and my family came here in 2013, we ended up homeless in Seattle. So we ended up having to branch out and move into Kent. I commute two hours each way to my job in downtown Seattle every single day, where I help hundreds of Seattleites every week with utility discounts, food access, healthcare navigation, and of course, housing. I can say, as someone who does this work every single day, the root of so many of these problems is the high cost of rent. People are coming to me to find food access programs because they have to choose between paying rent and buying groceries. Rent control is an important first step to allow working people to survive in this city. At some point, we must prioritize a person's life and well-being over a new luxury high-rise that will end up sitting vacant. The way the city council chooses to act on rent control will show who you really care about. The companies that profit off of the raising cost of our rent or the working people of Seattle. I urge you to stand with us in the fight for rent control.
My name is Sean Hosford. I'm 59 years old. Affordable rent is not a luxury. It ensures the possibility of diversity, livability, and safe dwellings for all of our community members. As a Seattle resident who was born here, I remember getting out of high school, remember, I'm 59, and I was able to afford my first place. It cost $175 a month. It was one bedroom. It had a view of Lake Union. My, how things have changed. As a homeowner, I look forward to constructing an affordable apartment, when money allows, above our garage. As a Seattle citizen, it is imperative that we get rent control now. We can work together on this to solve affordable housing and houselessness. Thank you.
Next is Dove John.
My name's Anthony Terhar. Greetings and salutations, most noble tax-paying citizens of Seattle.
I'm sorry, we have to go by order?
Please, I'm sorry.
We have to go by order? Sorry. Is Dove here? Dove, John? If Dove's not here, the next speaker is Imogen Williams. Then, Imogen, you're next. Then we have Raging Grannies, Benjamin Shabazz, Carrie Thompson, and Lubella Bowen.
Roanoke Park had its annual family picnic. I'm there with my rent control predictions. I met two men who provided live music for the picnic, and they didn't even charge. One of them was particularly emotional. He was very close to crying. Why? Because he has to live in Seattle. How's he going to get jobs in music, in performing, if he's not in Seattle? But his rent is taking everything. He only has pennies left. That is not fair. We have to change this. Okay. Assisted living. I go every day because my son's professor is there. I make him walk. Talk to one of the young caregivers. He lives in Auburn. How much of his paycheck is left if he drives to Auburn and back every day? He'll just have pennies. How can he have a life? Do I have to stop? I went to Shama's door-knocking event, and I'm going home. And you know, there's that huge bakery, that huge factory bakery. And a fellow came up to me, a security person, very upset. The Central District was about African-American people. There's nobody left. This isn't right. We have to make our city work for us. And we're all going to have to put our shoulder, we're going to have to put our back in it to make it happen. Thank you.
Before the Raging Grannies start, just wanted to announce there's free childcare and the Sam Smith Room. You don't have to search for the room. Just find one of my staff members, and they will help you. After the Raging Grannies, we have Benjamin Shabazz, Carrie Thompson, Lubella Bowen. Please be ready to speak next.
We're a gaggle of grannies. We walk out of our families to come here today and help with the way for rent control. Cruel elections unceasing. We're missing our voice, demanding a choice. Rent control. Being priced out of this city. We hear it more and more. While the rich keep getting richer from the pockets of the poor. So join this gaggle of grannies. Gaggle of your families. We're making a movement. We're making a dent for rent control. We're doing it! We decide to rent control. We will say it very nicely. Rent control. Read our list. Let the bad all rent control.
Thank you, Raging Grannies. Isn't Benjamin Shabazz is before you? Okay. It's Benjamin first, then Carrie, then Lubella, and then Karen Weinstein and Donna Jean Thompson.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Shabazz. First of all, I want to say thank you to our honorable Kshama Sawant for having the insight and the courage. I want to emphasize the word courage, to have put this whole thing together. Seattle needs rent control. I'm a tenant at the Brighton Apartments in South Seattle. I'm a Vietnam veteran and a senior citizen. There are many people in my building who are elderly and on fixed income. And even with the help of our management, the situation will soon be out of their control. Economic eviction. We need rent control to prevent economic eviction. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Thompson.
Please ask, because to the microphone.
I am 78 years old, disabled, a widow, and have lived at the Brighton Apartments for the past 13 years. My income is $1,775 a month, and I'm having trouble making my rent now without any raises. I want to know about relocation help for those of us who will be made to move out of our present homes and buildings. Our building is made up of 125, one, two, and three-bedroom units with about 225 people. When I moved in 13 years ago, it was advertised as low-income senior housing, but that is no longer true. We have multi-generational, multi-income family building now with my unit housing of three or four more generations. I feel I'm getting an economic eviction because I can't afford the raised-in rent. Thank you.
Carrie, can you speak to one of my staff members? Ted, can you show her to one of our others? Or if you want to talk to her yourself. Let's make sure we stay in touch.
Thank you.
Lubella?
Hello. My name is Lubella Bowen. I am also from the Brighton Apartments in the Rainier Valley. I have been, my concern is the cost of high rent. I have been, we were, the building that we live in is a senior-led building. I have been there 15 years, almost 16 years. We consider ourselves a community. We look out for each other. Nobody goes unattended. If we don't see someone, we go to see about them. We check on them, and we're just one big happy family. And I would hate to have to move because of the cost of rent. We're on a limited income. We're all on Social Security. And you think about, if we move, we can't afford to move. And we would love to stay in our homes. We'd love to stay with our family because that's what we consider them to be in the Rainier Valley. And we would love to have rent control because we realize that though, as someone forestated, they haven't put a cap on the rent, and it's all about the ones who's making the money, but we want to send a message to them. When they're going to, where we are, they will be. And they'll understand where we're coming from if they get to be that age. And I thank you all for this time and allowing me to speak because I too, I'm all for, what do we want?
Rent control!
Do we want it? Now!
Carrie and Lubella, can you please make sure you give your contact information to Adam there so we can be in touch with you? So after, Lubella is Karen Weinstein. Am I saying it right?
I'm Karen Weinstein.
Weinstein. Sorry, one second. After Karen, there's Donna Jean Thompson, then Marguerite Richard, and then Dan Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I'm Karen Weinstein. I'm 59 years old. I'm a single parent, full-time working, and I'm a resident of the Brighton Apartments with these other people. I use one whole paycheck of the month for my rent. I do not use cable. I don't go on vacations. And I have trouble making ends meet. Is that right? And something on my mind is that I hope that when we have rent control that federal and state-funded buildings will also, those programs will also be controlled by rent-controlled. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. And please... Merci, et s'il vous plaît...
Mon nom est Donna Hall Thompson. Ils me connaissent comme Donna Jean à Brighton. Je suis aussi résidente là-bas. J'y ai vécu 11 ans. Et la majorité de nous qui vivent là-bas sont à un revenu fixe. Nous ne pouvons pas augmenter quoi que ce soit à moins que nous ayons à travailler. Je suis 67 et je dois toujours travailler. Et l'une de nos plus grandes préoccupations est que la location va nous enlever. Et donc nous prenons des pas pour faire un bruit, pour faire savoir aux gens à propos de nos problèmes. Et c'est la chose principale, le contrôle de la location et l'augmentation de la location. Et que nous sommes sous un revenu limité. Nous sommes dans un bâtiment privé. Donc nous sommes préoccupés par comment cette contrôler de la location va affecter les gens qui ont des bâtiments privés. LLCs. Vous venez de Brighton, vous pouvez entendre le nom de Brighton Campus, Brighton Senior Center, et simplement LLC Brighton. Et donc nous sommes dans un dilemme parce que nous sommes à la disposition directement de la gestion. Et nous essayons d'ouvrir les communications pour leur dire la sérieux de notre situation là-bas. Et donc nous aimerions faire une voix ici et là pour faire savoir aux gens et à notre gestion que nous sommes très sérieux à propos de lutter pour notre droit d'avoir le contrôle de la location.
Peux-tu terminer pour que nous puissions...
Oui, oui. Donc, ma ligne de base est que je voudrais dire que nous sommes très intéressés par notre part dans toute cette situation. Donc merci.
Merci Donna Jean. Carrie, Lubella, Karen, Donna Jean, tout le monde qui a parlé des appartements Brighton. Peux-tu tous s'assurer que tu partages tes informations de contact avec Adam ou Jonathan? Et nous devrions nous assurer que nous adressons les problèmes spécifiques que vous avez à la disposition dans votre bâtiment immédiatement. Et absolument, nous avons besoin que vous soyez une partie du mouvement du contrôle de la location. Puis nous avons Marguerite Richard, puis Dan Kavanaugh, puis, désolée, je ne peux pas lire ce nom. Hindha Kipnis, si cela vous semble votre nom. S'il vous plaît, vienne. Et puis Emily McArthur.
Ok, je suis Richard et je suis connue ici parce que je suis née et élevée à Seattle. Donc je viens te parler de façon sérieuse à propos de la pauvreté générationnelle et du traumatisme communautaire. Donc je dis qu'il y a une plainte en train de se dérouler à Wilmington, Delaware. Si quelqu'un connaît l'histoire de Wilmington contre le maire et tous ceux qui gouvernent la ville de Wilmington en ce qui concerne la gentrification et la incarceration massive des négros et tout autre traumatisme qui se produit contre les personnes noires ici en Amérique. Donc je ne sais pas comment vous pouvez contrôler la location quand nous n'avons pas assez de monnaie pour même payer la location, même si nous vivons au-dessus de la terre dans un environnement decent. Et je incline tout le monde qui est dans la habitation publique qui sait ce que Andrew Lofton a fixé à faire à travers la habitation publique, c'est de discriminer. Je peux être dans le livre de rapports de Guinness pour avoir fait je ne sais pas combien de plaintes multiples dans l'office de droits de la liberté civile. Parce que chaque fois que vous faites une plainte HUD, elle va directement à Marie-Claire Lockhart, qui est là. Je ne sais pas ce qu'elle fait. Mais elle fait la chose mauvaise. Et il est temps que nous nous levons et qu'on met tout ce qui n'est pas juste, qui vient contre nous. C'est 2019, pas 1919. Et nous devrions avoir appris des erreurs que l'Amérique a fait contre nous. Vous voyez ça, Kane? Vous vous souvenez de la ride d'Aaron? Vous avez vu la ride de la fleur de la Reine aujourd'hui.
Après Dan, c'est ce nom que je ne peux pas lire parce que c'est sort de la page. Donc c'est Linda ou Hinda ou quelque chose comme Hinda. Et si ce n'est pas votre nom, si vous voulez voir si c'est votre nom, n'hésitez pas à venir ici et à le lire. Mais en fin de compte, après Dan, c'est Emily McArthur, puis Barbara Finney, puis le honneur Michael Fuller et puis Meech.
Hey, tout le monde, mon nom est Dan. Je suis membre de Socialist Alternative. Et j'ai vécu à Seattle pendant quatre ans. Je suis un locataire. Mon propriétaire est une entreprise. L'une des raisons pour lesquelles ce mouvement est si important pour moi, vous savez, ma propriété a changé de main deux fois dans le passé. Et quand ma licence est levée, je n'ai aucune idée. Je sais que mon salaire va augmenter, mais je ne sais pas à quel point. Et j'ai parlé à certains gens autour du district qui sont à la face de 300, 400 increases ou plus. Et oui, je pense que je devrais avoir un rôle. Je pense que les gens ordinaires devraient avoir un rôle dans la question de si ils peuvent garder leurs maisons. Je ne pense pas que c'est juste que le lobby de propriétaire a autant de pouvoir. Et je pense que c'est regrettable que les autres membres du conseil ne soient pas ici. Mon membre du conseil, Bruce Harrell, je ne suis pas surpris, mais je suis déçue qu'il ne soit pas ici. Mais j'ai un message pour Bruce. Vous savez, vous pouvez courir, mais vous ne pouvez pas se cacher. Nous allons revenir et nous allons construire notre mouvement plus grand et plus fort parce que nous avons besoin du contrôle de la location, d'accord?
Mon nom est Emily McArthur et je suis aussi membre de Socialist Alternative. Et j'ai été vraiment inspirée de voir ces trois jeunes gens venir ici au début de la réunion. Et donc je veux également échoer Greta Thunberg. Mais mon message est aux membres du conseil qui ont choisi de ne pas être ici ce soir. Et je dis: comment pouvez-vous? Comment pouvez-vous gouverner une ville sous la crise climatique, sous une crise de housing, et refusez même de montrer votre visage ici ce soir? Ils pensent qu'ils peuvent ignorer notre mouvement, mais je dis non. Comment vous? La lutte pour la ville que nous avons besoin prendra tous nous, mais elle inspirera aussi une contrôleur nationale, statewide, régionale, nationale. Nous devrons être loud, nous devrons être persistents, et nous devrons combattre contre les loopholes corporatifs jusqu'à la fin. Ils ne seront peut-être pas ici ce soir, mais laissez-moi vous dire qu'ils sont venus. Seniors, étudiants, travailleurs, petites entreprises, tous sont touchés par la inaffordable de la habitation à Seattle. Et tous devraient rejoindre notre lutte pour le contrôle de la location. Aux détracteurs qui disent que les développeurs ne vont pas construire ou qu'ils vont permettre que la habitation devienne détruite. Premièrement, vous supposez que le mouvement du contrôle de la location est la dernière station. Et que nous ne combatrons pas la taxe sur les grandes entreprises pour construire des bâtiments sociaux. Deuxièmement, nous sommes totalement conscients que le capitalisme n'est pas intéressé et incapable de répondre aux besoins des gens travaillant. Et c'est pourquoi nous avons besoin d'un approche socialistique. Et c'est pourquoi je suis heureuse que nous ayons un lutteur socialiste comme Kshama Sawant ce soir. La habitation est un problème de race. C'est un problème des femmes. C'est un problème LGBTQ. C'est un problème environnemental. C'est un problème de vous. Joignez cette lutte parce que quand nous luttons!
Nous gagnons.
Barbara Finney, vous êtes la prochaine. Et puis le honneur Michael J Fuller, puis Meech et puis Anthony Darhar.
Oh, va-t-elle aller d'abord? Oh, d'accord.
Je suis Hindha Kipnis. Et je veux juste répéter ce que la grange a dit. Lève la banque sur le contrôle de la location. C'est dans le stade. Et nous devons travailler dur pour ça. Mais je voulais vous parler d'autre chose. Tout ce que vous entendez partout est: nous avons besoin de croissance. Nous devons développer l'économie. Et je veux lier ça à la change climatique. Parce que la croissance économique apporte la sécheresse globale. Et personne ne parle de ça, sauf cette jeune personne aujourd'hui à la U.N., Greta Thunberg. Et elle a seulement 16 ans. Et elle a ses compétences à propos. Et je pense que nous devons penser à la grande planète parce que le système dans lequel nous vivons, qui est appelé le capitalisme, ne survivra pas sans croissance économique. Et c'est pourquoi vous l'entendez partout. Développez l'économie. Et rappelez-vous que c'est pourquoi nous avons affaire à une crise climatique incroyable. Et c'est lié. Donc dans vos esprits, vous devez trouver un moyen de lier ça avec la hausse des rentes et la manque de contrôle de la location. Et comment allons-nous changer ça?
Barbara Finney, et c'est Lisa Gimo.
Plus près du micro.
Nous sommes de l'American Federation of Government Employees Local 3197. FGE. Et notre local union soutient la lutte pour le contrôle de la location. La union représente les employés du Seattle VA Medical Center sur Beacon Hill. La perte rapide de la location affordable à Seattle est de par importance pour nos membres et leurs familles. Ça affecte profondément les vétérans que nous servons. Donc nous soutenons pleinement les efforts pour développer la développement de la habitation sociale accessible et de politiques de contrôle de la location universelle, sans loopholes corporatifs. Merci conseillère Swant.
Le honneur Michael J Fuller, Meech Bakio et Anthony Darhar.
Oui, je suis le honneur Michael Fuller, juridique. Oui, nous devons avoir le contrôle de la location. Je regarde extraordinaire tempête avec la autorité de la Haute-d'État, Andrew Lofton, Rod Brandon et Deborah St. Cassin. Je regarde l'Acte Organisé de Contrôle d'Actes d'octobre 15, 1970, signé par le président Richard Nixon. Et l'Acte de Contrôle d'Actes d'octobre 24, 1954, signé par le président Dwight Eisenhower. Et l'Acte American d'octobre 3, 1965, signé par le président Lyndon Johnson. Harry Truman a dit: combien de fois? 1948. Harry Truman a dit: combien de fois doit-on être touché au coude avant qu'ils réalisent qui l'a touché? Octobre 16, 1967, Mardi de la Chine, où allons-nous de là? Octobre 16, 2019, où allons-nous de là?
Je parle aujourd'hui comme membre de l'Association de l'Éducation à Seattle. Je suis enseignante de l'école publique à Seattle. Je travaille à Nova. Je suis enseignante de l'éducation spéciale, mais je suis aussi coordinatrice de McKinney-Vento. McKinney-Vento est un programme qui sert aux étudiants sans intérêts et aux étudiants qui vivent dans une habitation temporaire. Il y a près de 4,000 étudiants dans le programme McKinney-Vento. Dans certaines écoles, c'est 5% d'une école entière. Dans d'autres écoles, c'est 20% d'une école. Mais ça ne concerne pas les étudiants dont les familles ont une habitation stable mais dont le salaire est totalement inaffordable ou qui sont obligés de transférer après leur année d'éligibilité de rester dans une école après la fin de l'éligibilité McKinney-Vento. Ça est super disruptif et ça provoque la displacement pour ces étudiants. Parce que le Seattle Education Association a unanimously adopté une résolution en support de cette loi. Notre union et nos écoles sont concentrées sur l'équité. Et si nous ici ne pouvons pas avancer cette législation, envoyer un message à nos législateurs et passer le contrôle de la location, alors nous ne fournissons pas de l'équité à chaque étudiant, à chaque école, tous les jours.
Mister Anthony, qui était ici plus tôt. Une seconde, avant que tu ne continues Anthony, c'est Adam Capillo et Leah Perlmutter qui vont parler ensemble. Ted, ils auront deux minutes. Et puis nous aurons Brooks Step et Nancy McKinnon. Allez Anthony, allez.
Salutations et salutations, les citoyens les plus nobles et belles citoyennes payant les taxes de Seattle. Il y a des executives corporatifs qui ont gagné 11 milliards de dollars l'an dernier et n'ont pas payé les taxes. Vous n'avez pas eu trois mois de vacances payées. Vous n'avez pas eu 50 dollars de santé professionnelle à couverture complète. Mais votre amour est si épuisant. Les nuages qui se tournent autour des montagnes de Seattle sont comme vous. Ils sont saturés par l'eau. Vos coeurs sont saturés par l'amour. Et ça m'épuise chaque jour que je me réveille dans cette ville. Si je pouvais mettre le spirit de la population de Seattle dans une boîte, je mettrais Coca-Cola hors de business. Je vous aime, Meech Kshama-Savant. Et je adore Jenny Durkin. Je vais poursuivre le gouvernement fédéral pour ne pas m'avoir envoyé à Seattle quand j'étais en primaire. Je veux juste dire que je vous aime. Et s'il vous plaît, faites vos amis et vos voisins rejoindre la lutte pour nous donner le contrôle de la location. Merci.
Ted, deux minutes.
Je suis Adam Capillo. Mon union, le Local 4121, représente plus de 5,000 étudiants et 1,000 post-docs à la Université de Washington. Nous sommes fiers de nous tenir ici ce soir avec tous vous pour déclarer que c'est temps pour le contrôle de la location à Seattle. 82% de nos membres de l'union sont en situation de colère de location, payant environ la moitié de leurs salaires à l'acheteur. Ça veut dire que les gens vont passer parfois les essentielles bases comme la santé ou d'autres choses parce que la location prend tellement de notre salaire. Nous savons que ça n'est pas juste. Et donc pendant ces derniers mois, j'ai rassemblé des signatures pour la petition, parlé à des gens sur le contrôle de la location. Et il est clair pour moi que nous sommes prêts à lutter pour la ville que nous avons besoin. Et si c'est une chose que j'ai apprise dans mon temps sur la lutte avec mon union, de la lutte pour 15 ou de la lutte historique de la résidence d'appartements Chateau, c'est que quand nous luttons!
Nous gagnons. Nous luttons. Nous gagnons.
Mon nom est Leah Perlmutter. Je suis un locataire, membre du Local 4121 et étudiante en informatique et en ingénierie à l'université de Washington. En informatique, je gagne plus que la plupart des étudiants en études de grad et je paie 37% de mon revenu en location pour un appartement modeste avec un roommate. Malgré être en situation de colère de location, je suis considérée bien en comparaison avec beaucoup de mes étudiants et des milliers de personnes dans cette ville. De plus, il y a des milliers de personnes dans cette ville qui n'ont pas accès à aucune habitation. Le contrôle de la location ne peut pas venir assez vite. La location affordable payée par la taxe sur les grandes entreprises ne peut pas venir assez vite. Quand nous luttons!
Nous gagnons.
Après Brooks, nous avons Nancy, puis Renee McCoy, puis Emerson Johnson. Et notre final speaker est Richard Fred.
Hi, tout le monde.
Ted, vous avez...
Je suis Brooks Step et je suis une personne queer de couleur vivant à Capitol Hill, ce qui est vraiment rare ces jours-ci. Économie éviction est... oui, c'est vrai. Économie éviction est quelque chose qui affecte les personnes de toutes les identités marginales. Nous avons entendu parler de ça aujourd'hui, les personnes de couleur, les personnes queer. Et c'est fondamentalement parce que le capitalisme est la vie défiant et le capitalisme affecte tous nous. Capitol Hill est historiquement un quartier queer, non? Et pour tant de nous, comme les communautés de couleur, nous avons été poussés de ces quartiers qui portent nos familles, nos communautés. Ils portent notre appartement. Où, vous savez, parfois, pour certains de nous, nous avons été poussés de nos familles d'origine, nos familles biologiques. Et donc ça affecte effectivement à des gens qui ont été traumatisés. Donc, vous savez, mon chemin est similaire. J'ai vécu à Capitol Hill pendant les quatre derniers ans. Et il y a quelques mois, mon bâtiment a été acheté par une entreprise de gestion de propriété. Et nos rentes ont été augmentées de plus de 69%. Et oui, non? Et nous avons été en mesure d'organiser ensemble. Et nous avons été en mesure de gagner effectivement le contrôle de la location, moins de 10%. Donc beaucoup de nous pouvaient vraiment rester dans nos bâtiments. Et ce que je veux dire est que oui, quand nous luttons, nous gagnons. C'est possible. Et nous avons toujours besoin du contrôle de la location parce que comme a dit quelqu'un, ce n'est pas là où nous nous arrêtons, non? Nous avons besoin de contrôle de la terre communautaire. Nous avons besoin de contrôle de la ville communautaire. Et le contrôle de la location est ce qui le rend possible. Donc quand nous luttons?
Nous gagnons.
Je suis Nancy McKinnon. Et je suis arrivée ici en bus et j'ai un travail normal comme tout le monde dans cette pièce. Mais je suis un locataire. Je fournis... I provide housing for my one building. I work with my tenants. I keep my place clean. I go there and work there every month. They call me if something's wrong. I go there and fix it. I have tenants who have lived there a long time. I even give them extra time to try to find ones moving out. And I told her, you can stay rent-free for another week or two to find a place because there's not many places to find available. And I work with them. I don't support rent control. I've seen it in a lot of other areas and states where it hasn't been effective. I know everyone wants this to be the solve-all-their-problems. But there is a larger problem than just rent control, like you've discussed today. And I just wanted to give my two cents' worth. I know I'm in the minority here in this room. And I support my tenants. I know their birthdays. I know their kids when they go to school. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nancy. I appreciate you coming. Nancy, could I ask you to connect with Jonathan there so we can keep in touch with you? Because the reason we... This is a draft legislation and not the final version is precisely because we need to hear more from small landlords. And we would love to have a conversation with you.
I'm the only one in the room either.
I know. But our collective starting point has to be that all people deserve affordable housing. So we have Renee, then Emerson, then Richard Frith.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much, Shama, for starting this. Like so many other wonderful things, that you start for the good of humanity, all of us. And this is another really much-needed cause. And I just want to say to the landlords, because there are really some really good landlords that aren't in this for profit, and to those, I say, thank you. And I don't think this is trying to push out the small landlords by any means, nor is it going to make your... The rent lower than your mortgage. So there's a few things there that I'm sure will be addressed. It's just, you know, I hear story after... I've lived in Seattle for 33 years. I love this city just like everyone else. And oh my goodness, have I seen the changes. And it's really devastating. It's quite sad because it doesn't... It affects all humanity. And this isn't just, oh, well, gee, just got to move to a different city. I mean, so I hear story after story after story, like a few here tonight, how rents are continually being brought up $300 at a time, $500. Developers still coming in, wiping out people. And where are these people going to live? And I'm so sad that honestly, there's so many of my friends that don't even live here anymore.
Can you wrap up, Renee?
And so I just really support the rent control. And thank you for everyone jumping on board. And we really need this rent control in the state, not just...
Hi there. My name is Emerson. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative. I'm here to enthusiastically support the draft legislation for rent control that Councilmember Swant is putting forward. But also, I'm so excited to stand with everyone in this room and the 12,000 other people who are demanding affordability in Seattle. I've lived in Washington my whole life. I've lived in Seattle specifically since I was 18, so six years now. And I have moved every single year that I have lived here because I've been economically evicted from my home. And I know that I am not the only person in this room who's had that experience. Working people, Black and Brown communities are at the forefront of this housing crisis. And it's funny to me because I, you know, we hear from corporate developers and so many of the other city council members, the platitudes that they have about solving the housing crisis. And now, when a bold policy is putting... Being put forward, where are they? They are here. And I think that just goes to show, this is going to be a relentless fight won by the movement. Not back-room deals, not, you know, compromises made with developers and big business. It's going to be won by us and by the 12,000 other people that we're going to get involved in this. So I'm just so excited to win rent control with all of you.
Our last two speakers are Richard Frith and James McDonald. And then we will move into committee discussion.
Good evening. My name is Richard Frith. Some of you may know me better as Gri, middle initial D, landlord. I came because I like to be popular, and I wanted to be able to greet all you people as one of the rich landlords. I'm a fat old white guy who's been doing this for 37 years, according to my last look at it. I agree with one thing. Rents are way too high, and I'm scared for my tenants. It's... I can't believe that there's any place left for a middle-class person to live in this town because I could not afford it in today's situation. Or much less even for working-class people. 37 years ago, I bought a duplex because I was living there. The nine lady was going to sell it, because rents were going to go up too much. I bought it. I couldn't afford a mortgage, so I got seller financing. I was lucky. I was middle-class. Things have changed since then. Reagan got elected, and the highest taxpayers used to... The highest taxes for taxpayers used to be 70% until Reagan got elected.
Tax the rich.
And then, damn right, that's exactly it. The tax rate on the richest people dropped. The middle class has been evaporating. The average wages have not moved since the 1970s. High rent is only a symptom of a bigger problem, the demise of the middle class. I became middle-class because I bought 18... I ended up with 18 units. We must tax the rich. This is only the most convenient nail he had that we can hit with the hammer we have in our hands. But rent control was only a small amount of this. We need to tax the hell out of capital gains because that's where I just made money. I sold a unit... I sold a building last year. I got... Under this proposed capital gains income tax, my tax on the building I sold last year would be $16,800. That's nice. We're talking about it's hundreds of millions of dollars a year for the city. That's great. My income tax from the feds is over $150,000. We need to tax the rich seriously.
And then our final speaker is Chris. And then we really have to get into the committee.
I'd like to introduce somebody who I met about two hours ago on the street corner. I mentioned I was coming here to City Hall for rent control, and he decided to turn out as well. So this is James, everyone.
Being that I have traveled abroad, and I have been on the streets of many places, I understand that there is a simple need for human relations. In the way that we treat one another, it stands to be the governing of the royal law. Love thy neighbor as thyself. If we have no neighbors, we have no one to love. Because when you go for a cup of sugar or a cup of milk to make a meal for someone, you actually have no one to look forward to because they are trying to make rent due. They're trying to access avenues of charities, which are being exhausted because people are being put on the streets for various reasons. Some can't, some don't want to. But being that I am currently on the streets, and I actually see a lot of things that most people don't, I don't shed light on those that don't want, but I express knowledge to people on how to better their situation. One of the things that I've strived for since I have been homeless in California, as well as here, is that I want a place to call home. I want people that I can look to and say, good morning, neighbor. How are you? How did you sleep? How did you do yesterday evening when our doors closed and we were at home with our loved ones? I actually look forward to that, no matter where I go. Because even though I am on the streets right now, I look for a place to call home. And when I find that place, I'd rather see people that aren't struggling to make rent because of some inflation or some taxation based on monetary needs. The needs of people are shelter, food, things of that nature. Dead presidents don't feel anything. They've done their term.
Thank you. Could you please wrap up?
Good evening, Councilmember Swant. My name is Chris. I'm a disabled person working as a barista. And I'm here out of desperation to plead for rent control because I don't know where I'm going to stay at the end of this week. For the past three years, I have shared a three-bedroom duplex with housemates in the Central District. And each year, the rent has increased. The total cost of my duplex is now $500 more than when I first moved in, and I pay $1,025 for my room. In the past year, there have been several months where I had to borrow money from friends and St. Vincent de Paul to prevent... In order to keep my... In order to keep my housing. I even had to drop out of my teaching program because I had to work more hours to pay for my rent. I recently tried to apply for a low-income studio for $8.75 a month, but I was told that I don't make the minimum of $26,000 a year to qualify for those studios. So I was sent to several other buildings. I tried three of them, and all of them said that they had several applications in front of me. There is an affordable housing crisis because property managers, landlords, and developers are more concerned with market value than actually housing people. And thousands of units go empty while thousands more are forced out of their homes. I come here today to remind you that we are all... Many of us are just one paycheck away from losing everything. It doesn't matter how hard you try or how much education you have. This city just simply doesn't care about us. As waves of people come in and drive up the cost of living, the culture of the city has changed in favor of profit, and it's forcing out the communities and the culture that make living in Seattle so desirable in the first place. This has to end, and rent control can stop developers and landlords from pricing us out of our homes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris. And please make sure you share your contact information with my office so we can, you know, address even the specific situation you're facing. And similarly, those of you who are either yourselves renters or you know somebody who's a renter and is facing a difficult situation, please make sure you, you know, connect with my office so we know how to get back in touch with you in the days following tonight's committee. And we have no illusion that we are going to be able to solve this deep crisis that our region is in, one building or one tenant at a time. But fighting those individual battles helps, you know, inject momentum into our larger fight for rent control, as you saw with the Chateau building victory. So each of your situations, you know, winning a victory in each of your situations matters to us greatly. So please be in touch. I also wanted to invite small landlords who are either here or are watching this on Seattle Channel to also reach out to my office because we want to make sure we hear your concerns and make sure that the legislation, as it gets, you know, gets better with community input, also includes the genuine concerns of small landlords. And we want to make sure that we support those who are not... Small landlords who are not gouging or exploiting their tenants. And we want to make sure we have a policy that actually works for tenants. And I wanted to echo somebody who said that it's not good enough. I mean, the... I think it was Brooke who... They won a victory against a 69% rent increase, but it was a 10% rent increase. And I agree with Brooke. Even 10% is too high because a simple way you can measure that is... When was the last time your wages went up by 10% in a month, right? So how can your rent go up by that much? That's why we are talking about a very strong rent control law. And then I completely agree that we need, you know, rent control has to be part of a comprehensive policy program that has to include major expansion of publicly-owned social housing by taxing the wealthy. So I agree with Richard, who said that we need to tax the rich. But it's not an either-or. We have to win all these policies because our city is really lopsided. It's so wealthy on the one hand, and on the other hand, so many of us are suffering. So that has to end, and rent control has to be part of it. And finally, apologies to those of you who want to speak more, but we had to... I had to ask you to wrap up. I hate doing that, but I have to because we have to move on. Ted, you have a presentation that you want to pull up. And we want to invite all the people who are going to be here at the table. Can you please join us? Those of you who are scheduled to be here. You can sit on this side, it's fine. Either way. You also can sit here if you want, facing the audience. It's up to you. Could we have just very brief, one-sentence introductions? Name an organization just for the record.
Pepperdome, Councilmember Swant's office.
Can you go?
Reverend Angela Yang, Senior Pastor at Bethany United Church of Christ.
Violet Lavatay with the Tenant Union of Washington.
Devin Silvernail, Co-Chair of the Seattle Renters Commission and with B. Seattle.
Thank you. We have a presentation that will cover the highlights of the draft legislation. Ted is going to go through each slide and, you know, have introductory comments for each slide. But then we want our guests here to... Panelists here to expand on each of the slides and make whatever points you want to make. And we'll go through the presentation. Go ahead, Ted.
So the first question is, who's covered by rent control? And many cities have rent control that's limited to certain types of housing or housing built before a certain date. But in this bill, all the housing in the city would be covered by rent control.
Did Devin or Violet want to talk about why we are insisting on this and what we have seen through studies on how rent control policies have worked in other cities?
Sure. Yeah, you know, the number-one thing that I would say, and you hear this too from the crowd that isn't in favor of rent control, is that, you know, you hear "conventional wisdom", quote-unquote, is that it limits development. I think that's a huge argument against rent control. Last year, the Haas Institute at the University of California, Berkeley, did a study that, in addition to other things, flat-out said that that is usually... That quote is usually not backed up by actual, real research or evidence. So I think that is a huge thing to mention here. You know, why we're asking for it to cover everybody? Because, you know, that boogeyman of rent control doesn't necessarily exist itself. The thing that is really the biggest problem with rent control are the things that are built into it to undermine it. And that's why we're asking for a full, complete, universal rent control package.
One of the things people always say to us, why is it that you guys are pushing for rent control? Rent control, as you know, it equates to... It's putting people more on the streets. People don't realize when you get a rent increase, they don't have the means or the extra income to pay that extra rent. Rent control would cap some of the outrageous because we know a lot of landlords are... I mean, the latest I've heard up in Capitol Hill was $6,000 a month that the landlord wants to charge. And these are real numbers. And that's why it's important that we get rent control because of, we need that cap. And this is for everyone. It will cover everyone.
One thing I wanted to clarify also is when we say all rent... All... Sorry, all rental housing citywide would be covered. And those of you who have this... There's a... There's this handout you all can look at. It's a double-sided handout. And under the section where we say no corporate loopholes, one of the things we mentioned there is universal rent control. And we're talking about both all kinds of rental homes, you know, regardless of whether it's an apartment or a room in a single-family home. It doesn't matter, or an accessory dwelling unit. It doesn't matter what kind of rental place it is. The universal rent control... The universal rent control law should cover you. And also, the other point, I think, that we want to include here and that is in our draft legislation, is that regardless of the date of construction, all rental homes would be covered. And if panelists want to add to that, also what we've observed in San Francisco because of Costa Hawkins and so on, if you wanted to add to that, please do.
Yeah, well, so, I organized in San Francisco. I worked with tenants in San Francisco. I lived in San Francisco in an apartment that wasn't rent-controlled. I was very jealous of my friends that had a rent-controlled unit. And that was a lot of them that didn't have it. Most of the apartments in San Francisco, I would say, aren't covered under rent control. If your building was built before June of 1979, you don't have rent control in San Francisco. I'm sorry, if it was built after June of 1979. So essentially, if it's been built in the last 40 years, tough luck. Until recently in New York, until, well, the Upstate-Downstate Coalition won universal rent control. It was 19 -- it was 1974. So it was even longer. So basically, they had it set up for more and more time. As time went on, we had less and less stock. And so not exempting buildings based upon age will basically add stock all the time for affordable housing.
Exactly. And just one other thing, anecdote I wanted to share is, in -- I'm sure you -- many of you have had this experience, but in my economics 101 book -- I'm laughing because, of course, I didn't agree with a lot of what was in that textbook. But one of the things, you know, the textbook, just to give you a sense of what kind of economics often students are taught, one of the, you know, these little sort of pull-out boxes, one of those pull-out boxes I remember was, "Why Unions Are Bad," you know? I remember reading that. But the other box was -- The other box was about why rent control doesn't work. And the example that they had was, you know, "New York rent control is so evil because rich people like Mia Farrow." You know, Mia Farrow is the famous movie star who's very rich. You know, Mia Farrow has a rent-controlled, massive rent-control apartment in New York City, in Manhattan, and it's rich people like them who will have rent control. And that's why, if you're an ordinary person, you shouldn't support it. And the reason I mention it is not just because it's funny, but because the loopholes that have -- that were put in, the corporate loopholes that were put in place in other cities, not by the movement, obviously, but by the real estate lobby, meant that the stock of housing, rental housing that was covered by rent control law kept dwindling because of various loopholes. And that ended up meaning that it became a very rare commodity. So those who had it, had it, and those who couldn't have it, couldn't have it. And rather than creating unity among renters with a strong rental -- rent-control law, it ended up dividing renters between those who had rent-controlled units and/or those who knew somebody, you know, "Oh, my aunt has a rent-controlled unit, and she's moving to assisted living. I get to move into her unit," you know, the sort of underhanded market, rather than everybody, just because you're a renter, by law, you're getting rent control. So that's why, you know, these are live examples of how those loopholes have undermined rent-control laws, as Devin was saying. That's why we are making sure that our draft legislation has universal rent control. But I continue to stress on the word "draft" because we, in order to actually win what we have here, we will need to have a serious fight. That's what we've seen. And the New York City, New York State movements were successful because they built a united movement, Upstate-Downstate movement, they united everybody. That's the kind of movement we'll need.
So the legislation defines this thing, maximum rent increase. And rents cannot be raised more than the maximum rent increase in any given year. And the maximum rent increase, it can be -- rents can be raised less than that, or the rents can be lowered, or rents can stay the same. But rents cannot rise more than this maximum. And the maximum is the rate of inflation, the CPI-W, which is the inflation of wages. So if wages go up, then rents can go up the same amount. But rents can't go up faster than wages. So the Seattle inflation last year was 3.4%, and that would be the most that rents could be increased that year. And just to compare what happened with rents in Seattle to what happened with inflation, between 2010 and 2018, the average rent went up 69%. In that same time, inflation was 20.3%.
Yeah. I think one of the things that we're seeing, working at the Tenant Union, we get multiple calls every day about rent increases, like, where are we going to go? And I think one of the things that the landlords and developers want us to know, it doesn't work. Actually, it does. And I think they've gotten to the point where, there are some good landlords, and I've met them, there are some landlords who say, "You know what? Rent control is not going to work." Well, it's not going to work for them, but it'll work for us, those who are fighting for rent control. And I think the misconception of landlords and developers, what they're saying is, they've dictated a lot of our housing policies. And I'm going to tell you this, this is a fact, and it's in the numbers. African-American tenants are the first ones, they -- it's the highest rating of evictions in our state right now. So that tells you something, that housing right now is discriminatory. It's not fair. And so when landlords come and say, "Hey, I'm one of those people, please," when a landlord says something to me, I'm going to say something back. I'm sorry. I've dealt with a lot of them, and so I don't have a little bit of compassion for them, those who are coming against us. That's why it's important that we fight for this, that this will help us, and this will help more people get off the streets, y'all.
So I'm glad, tonight, actually, I met a woman, and I wanted to lift her up, Nancy, a landlord from Ballard. And she -- I gave her a hug, she gave me a hug, which I thought was wonderful. Because part of it is, we're working together on this to figure out a way for rent control. She said she wasn't -- she was against it, because part of it is, you know, as a small landlord, you know, it's really tough for her, and that the costs are rising. And I think part of it that was really important for us to share with her, and I'm glad that she listened in, was basically that she's, not knowingly, she's probably one of us. And I think, and as a person of faith, and somebody seeing our neighborhood disproportionately continue to have rents rise, I mean, 69%, I mean, no wonder our neighborhoods are being displaced. I mean, there's no way. No one can afford this. I mean, I can't even afford this. And I'm trying to have our communities continue to be together, but they keep getting pushed out. I'm really thankful to Shama Sawant for bringing this forward with all her staff and all of us, and the big win with the Chateau. I also know, having worked with King County Councilmember Larry Gossett, he's working day and night tirelessly to make sure there's affordable housing in our King County, and that's huge. So many times, we have luxury, you know, apartments, you know, that nobody of us can afford. But he's trying to make sure that we, the neighbors, can be, you know, in the homes that he's going to have built in King County. So part of it is working together. And as Shama is saying, it's a movement. It's a people all working together to make sure that, yes, you know, if inflation goes up by 2%, then rent, that makes sense to go up, you know, by 2%, but no more. Because basically, the key part is, we want to make sure that people stay in their homes, not on the streets. We have enough people that are homeless, we want to get the homeless people in homes, not put more people out on the streets to be homeless.
Reverend Angela and Violet bring this up, because this is exactly why the Seattle Renters Commission supported it in the first place, in the idea of rent control. And, you know, we came out in support of it in April, but I'll tell you that the commission has been working on this for two years, right? And this started with former Commissioner Cliff Cawthorn, who pushed hard and did a lot of research and went around and looked at a lot of places in -- around the country to see how they handle it. Other commissioners who can't be here at the table today, I'd like to, you know, give a shout-out to, also Beverly Aaron's and David Mooney, Michael Padilla, you know, folks who went out of their way to help because they know that this is exactly what is happening. You know, housing shouldn't be a privilege, right? You know, it shouldn't be just the few who have the most money who can live in a place. It should be for everybody. And that's, you know, that's why it's really great to have this tied to inflation, because you also have it tied to something, right? And that, again, like Councilmember Sawant, you had said earlier, when was the last time your rent went, or your raise went up by 10%? But maybe it did go up by 3.4, and you can actually still hang on. So it's, you know, it's really important that this is part of the provision, so thank you.
Before moving on, just to add, I got an email from a small landlord last week who asked that, who was originally very worried about rent control, although he said that he worked with his tenants and didn't raise the rent a lot and that sort of thing. And for him, when he found out that rents could be raised as much as inflation, he was a lot less worried about that. So for landlords that, there are small landlords out there that do keep the rents low and not gouge their tenants. And for them, the reality is, they're doing this anyway.
Yeah, that's great.
The legis -- this legislation, when it, it's a, it makes it clear that the rent control is tied to the apartment, it's not tied to the person. So even if somebody moves out, the rent control stays in place. And I'm sure people can give examples of that.
So we're talking about vacancy control, which I think it's important to talk about that. Councilmember Sawant also talked about the corporate loopholes that are in New York, or were in New York until the people won universal rent control. And, you know, vacancy control, that was one of those. It was one of those things that plagued San Francisco and plagued New York. You know, I can tell you, in the neighborhood that I lived in when I was in San Francisco, Bernal Heights, it was a low-to-middle-income queer neighborhood when I moved there, and then it was the ground zero for gentrification when I moved away. And I had neighbors who had a, I'm not kidding, they had like a 400% rent increase one year. And they fought against it. And it was because of things like, you know, things like this, right? So if you, that house was below market rate, and people moved out, and so they redid the lease, and when they redid the lease, because people moved out, there were vacant units inside that, inside that building, they raised the rent. Another thing about New York, I think that is great to kind of loop into vacancy control too, and tying it to housing units, is out there, a unit could be phased out of rent control if a person made too much money prior to the reforms that happened this year, which makes it also important to tie it to a unit as opposed to a person. Because, sure, you might have somebody who's making $120,000 a year, living in a unit, and then they move out. But then, what if the person who is making $40,000 moved into that unit afterward, right? So it's good to keep that continuity.
Right. And just to add to what was said, in California, there was a statewide law that was passed in 1995 called a destructive law, called the Costa Hawkins Act. It was named for Democratic Senator Jim Costa and Republican Assembly Member Phil Hawkins, and that's why it came to be known as the Costa Hawkins Act of 1995. And it included, it introduced many insidious loopholes into the rent control laws that the cities that had rent control law, it's not, it wasn't like the city, the statewide there was a law. But cities like San Francisco, the Costa Hawkins Act ended up greatly weakening the existing rent control laws. And one of the loopholes it introduced was vacancy decontrol, meaning if a tenant moves out, then the landlord is allowed to jack up the rents to market rate before the other new tenant moves in. So it basically means that you can't keep unit, homes rent-controlled. It's like, it's like writing, you know, allowing such a loophole to be written into the law basically means you are writing in the demise of the law in the law itself. So it's sort of contradictory. And the reason we call them corporate loopholes is because it is the corporate real estate lobby that has pushed for such loopholes in city after city, state after state, and that's whom we're going to have to fight in order to make sure that our rent-control law is not plagued by something insidious like vacancy decontrol. And just another example I wanted to give was the example of the city of Boston, which where the people who lived their experience, when their rent-control laws were weakened and then eliminated in the mid-1990s, the apartment rates doubled within a few months that followed. And so these are not, these are not idle speculations. We have seen these things happen in other cities, and we want to avoid those mistakes. But those mistakes, avoiding those mistakes depends on the strength of the movement. Go ahead, Ted.
I just want to add, for the vacancy control, it's really important, because if you heard during the public comment, my neighbor and friend Emerson, I mean, if she moved, or he or she moved, or they moved seven times, you know, every single year, can you just imagine what profit that landlord just took? And I think that's the key. It's like, if we want to have rent control, we also have to have vacancy control, because a lot of us, especially in my community, my congregation, whatever, they're moving a lot, just like my friend, because they can't afford the rent, so they're trying to find something lower. And then, and then the minute they move out, somebody hikes it up. I mean, that's a perpetual systemic problem.
So the next portion here is some of the just technical aspects of the bill. Some people's leases, the landlord pays the utilities, other times, the tenant pays the utilities. And so this rent-control law says that anytime you switch from the landlord paying the utilities to the tenant or back, then that amount needs to be added or subtracted from the maximum rent. And that way, utilities plus the rent stays the same either way. So, anyway, it's just some of the, yeah.
And then, just to clarify to everybody in the audience, the slides that we are going over as a summary, all of that language is incorporated in the draft legislation right now.
So some of you might know the term "one-to-one replacement." Anytime a building is demolished or renovated, the way that it's written in this law is that any affordable units in the building need to be replaced at the same affordability level. So to give an example, if there's 10, if there's a building with 10 houses in it, and maybe it's an older building, maybe those homes are affordable, if that building is demolished and a big building is built with 100 housing units in it, 10 of those units need to be tied to the old rents, you know, at the same rent plus whatever inflation, but at the, but at that old rent. But then, the other, the other new homes after the demolished ones are replaced, then those are new, there's no old rent to peg it to. So the building owner can set whatever rent they want for the new units to begin with, and then from that point on, any rent increases are tied to inflation.
Okay, keep going, it's okay. Unless anybody wants to speak.
I would say that, that sounds like our mandatory housing affordability program on steroids. So that's really great, because currently, currently, you know, we only are asking for up to 9% of new housing to be built with affordable housing. And I can tell you, just as a person, I've lived, I lived on Capitol Hill since 2007, crossing fingers. And in that amount of time, I've seen affordable older building after affordable older building being torn down and replaced. And the idea of having one, like, this replacement program would be really great, because then it could keep people in place, which is something that I know that the mayor has herself said that she wants. So could be something great for her to support as well.
Why not?
Yeah. You know, when you go outside and you look in Seattle downtown, every time you see a crane, the city is making money, somebody's making money. And so when they're building these luxurious apartments, like, who can afford to live in there? I mean, $6,000 a month. Yeah, even the people who are with Microsoft and Amazon, some of them won't rent there. This is outrageous. And I think everybody thinks that, why is there rent control? I have two landlord friends, I do have landlord friends. Yeah. There's a list of landlords that hate me, but I have two landlord friends. We always discuss this, they're And we always discuss this, they're, they're, they're good people. And I think when you have good people, you will, you will do the right thing. We have a lot of landlords who don't do the right thing. I'm, I'm, I'm for building more affordable housing. What does affordability mean? Sometimes it doesn't even mean affordable. Like, they say, oh, it's $3,500 for a studio. That is not affordable, you guys. And I think with rent control, it won't solve every problem of ours in the city of Seattle, which we have a lot of issues and stuff, but it will help alleviate a lot of these increases and people not going on the street. The tenant union right now is preventing people from going to the street. We go after landlords who does unjust practices. So if I sound angry at a landlord, forgive me. Not to, so, yeah.
Does this include, like, units, like, would this thing be, what it needs to include is to make sure that bedrooms, like, okay, if a two-bedroom or three-bedroom apartment is replaced, it can be replaced with some shitty micro studio, you know?
Cut in half.
Shared bathroom. Like, that needs to be the law.
Thank you for that, Sean. But I would urge people not just pop up with lots of questions, because we're also trying to sort of, no, no, that's okay. It's a very good question, actually. I'm just concerned that everybody is, it's 8 o'clock and people need to go, so I feel a lot of obligation to end the meeting soon, so that we don't lose people, you know?
So to repeat the question into the microphone for the record, so a person from the audience raised that, that if there's one-to-one replacement, the units that, the replacement units need to be the same sort of unit that was demolished, you know, they need to be, you don't replace two bedrooms with studios and that, and that sort of thing. For people that want to read the details, there are copies of the bill on the table in front, and we'll also make them available online. The way that it's written into the bill is that it, is that the replacement is measured by square foot, so, and it's proportional to the, to the size of the unit. So if there was...
Good. That's a, answers is better.
I was gonna go into details, but I think people understood. Next up, so what do you do about emergencies, exemptions, unforeseen things, hurricanes, that sort of thing? Every city that has rent control has some sort of, some sort of process or procedure to what, for what to do about that sort of situation.
Ted, for the audience, can you give an example of what you're talking about? Why should this be relevant to rent control law?
Good point.
Sure. So let's say there's a small landlord who owns one building, and a, there's a hurricane and a tree in the yard falls and crushes the roof. And they're, they don't own a lot of units, and so they don't have the money to repair that roof. And they feel stuck. Who gets, who's empowered to decide what to do about a situation like that? Many cities have something, some sort of rent control board. The way, the way it's written into this bill, and this is one of those things that definitely should be discussed in detail over time, is that there's a rent control board that's empowered to make, to look at emergencies and to make, and to grant on a case-by-case basis, exceptions. They only grant, can only grant exceptions for unforeseeable major things, you know, like that hurricane drops the tree on the roof, not for routine maintenance, you know, that comes from, or not maintenance that comes from neglect. So, you know, if the roof caves in because it hasn't been repaired in 40 years, that doesn't count. And also necessary, there's also a check for financial hardship from the building owner. If you have a giant real estate company that has 1,000 units, well, they have, over the course of the business, the resources to deal with that one tree for that one unit. But if you have that small landlord that just has that one building, that's the situation that, that this is designed to address. And also in the bill, it mentions that the financial hardship of the tenant also needs to be taken into consideration.
Good.
So that's the sort of scenario that the rent control board is for. Maybe I'll read these three slides together before they're discussed, because they all go together. So the rent control board, as it's written in this bill, it's, it's different, each city has a very different sort of rent control board structure. So in this bill, it's designed a lot like the rent control board in Quebec, and it's also designed a lot like Seattle's design review, design review board, where each council district would have its own local district rent control board that would take up issues in that area. Each district rent control, and then the district rent control boards would come together into the citywide one. Each district rent control board would be made up of five renters who rent, you know, who live in the district, and one landlord or building manager representative who owns or manages a building in that district. And the aspiration in the bill, the, to begin with, the, the boards are appointed by the district council member for that district, and then confer, and then that appointment is confirmed by the city council as a whole. But starting in four years to give time to put that infrastructure in place, to have those rent control boards be elected.
Do we have other cities that have elected rent control boards?
I didn't find them, but...
Berkeley, California.
And elected rent control board? And they're directly elected by voters?
Yep.
Yeah. By the people.
Okay.
So the, the bill has an enforcement section, which is also an area that should be examined and developed over time. It is, it's overwhelmingly based on the enforcement provisions that are already in Seattle's renter rights laws. So the same renter rights laws that govern the other tenant protections are the same ones that are used here, which may be something to revisit as a whole going forward. And there is, and within that, there's, what is it? So there's the normal penalties for breaking a tenant protection law, but also the tenant themselves needs to be made whole. So in this bill, making a tenant whole means that any, any extra rent that was charged beyond what's allowed needs, triple that needs to be paid back plus 12% annual interest, which is the same as what Seattle does for wage theft, paying back three times what's, what's stolen plus interest. Or at least that's what's allowed under the law of, for wage theft, as well as covering any damages, you know, that's done by, by overcharging rent, like erection costs.
And I don't know if you already mentioned this, the OLS on this slide refers to the City of Seattle Office of Labor Standards, which administers the laws that are in place for wage theft, as Ted was saying. Ted, can you give one or two examples of companies that have been held accountable on wage theft and have had to pay a penalty, if you can think off the top of your head? But also, in addition to that, can you also explain the rationale behind why, why is it that our draft legislation doesn't just say, if a landlord is caught flouting the rent control law, they just have to give their rent back, you know, whatever rent is owed? Why, why is there a penalty of triple damages and so on?
Yeah.
So if it were, if you imagine, so if it was just paying back the extra rent that was charged, then it would create an incentive for landlords who want to gouge their tenants to charge too much rent and, all the time. And the worst thing that happens to them is they have to give it back. By, by paying back triple what's, what's taken, then it, it means that if they're caught, they lose money, which is, which just, which makes an incentive to follow the rent control laws. And in terms of company, I don't have a list of, there was, the Office of Labor Standards put out a press release about a big settlement that they got for, for workers just a couple days ago, but I forget what it was for.
Okay. Yeah, I, the name of the company escapes me, but they did do a great job of getting penalties from a company that was engaging in wage theft. Did any of you have any thoughts on enforcement?
I think one of the things that we're seeing is, we have to, if we're gonna, because these are good policies, I'm even like, it's really good. Enforcing them is a big thing, because if you bring all this legislation forward for rent control, the thing is, we have to put a mechanism in place about enforcement, because a lot of landlords are still getting away under some of the ordinance. And we're talking about their security deposit theft. That is big in the state of Washington, and so this is good. I mean, you know, tenant union have been fighting for rent control since the 80s, you guys, since they banned the, you know, they banned it on the state of Washington. So this is finally a dream come true for the tenant union, because we believe that, yes, housing should be a right, a human right.
Yeah. There's two things as well that I really have to say that, or three things that are really great about this. A, the package isn't overly complicated, right? It's something that we can easily talk about, we can easily digest. It's not super convoluted. Also, having that real incentive for landlords to, to follow the rules. Because I'll say, you know, as a, as a renter and as an advocate for renters, I'm not here to put a landlord out of business necessarily, right? You know, I'm not here to punish a good landlord. But, I mean, I think that bad landlords should be punished. And there was, there was a woman who came up and did public comment who was a landlord, and I really appreciate that she said that she cares about her tenants and she works with her tenants. That's what small landlords usually do, they have a real relationship. And so I think it's also important and great to have the, the hardship thing built into, because sometimes that will happen. But if you've got a large landlord, like mine, who owns, you know, millions of dollars with the property in my neighborhood, you know, they, they can get away with that, but that person can't. So I think that's really an important thing to have in there, and also something that can maybe have those folks come on our side, too.
Yep.
So to flag some issues for follow-up discussions, as often happens when drafts of legislation come out, one is providing, discussing with and providing options for small landlords who make special allowances for good tenants. We do hear that, and that, and they, that should be built in. And then the other, the other point to flag is the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections, which is the department that enforces renter rights. As Violet says, there's already many tenant rights that exist that are being broken, and it would be valuable to have a broader discussion about those enforcement provisions.
Right. And, yeah, and there will probably be other elements that will come up when more community organizations look at the draft legislation. I wanted to make a few sort of concluding points, but did you have one more slide?
Well, this is a slide for the, for concluding points, but this shows, the black line at the top is what actual rent, average rents in Seattle were since 2011, which is, you could choose any starting point, but for this graph, that's the starting point. And then if they rose with inflation instead, that's the white line at the bottom.
And we should note that all that money that we all paid in rent, that went to make a lot of profits for a lot of very rich people, so it's, it's, we should not be apologetic about fighting for rent control, because this is the correct thing to do. One question that hasn't come up in the presentation that I wanted to ask our panelists before we sort of bring this discussion to a close and announce some of our next steps, is a common thing that we often hear from our detractors is that if you pass rent control, even a weak rent control, unlike the one we are talking about, which is a strong rent control, then it would lower the quality of available housing, because any type of rent control takes away the incentive of landlords to maintain the rental homes. How do you respond to that? And do you see any evidence to prove that, that happens?
So I'm gonna tell you that landlords, they'll, they'll, they have meetings on this type of stuff about stopping rent control. The thing is, they're a business. They don't really care about people, so that's a myth that I'm gonna disperse, because it's not true. The thing is, they're always gonna be in business. They find things to come at the tenants, to charge the tenants even more. So I don't believe in the, we won't build more housing. If there was no tenants, they would not be rich. And I want us to comprehend, a lot of tenants don't think that way. They just say, I just need a place. Lot of landlords, I repeat, a lot of landlords, there's tactics that they use, well, we won't have enough places to stay, or, listen, they're out to make money. Do you think that's true? They will keep building and building and building. And this right here, this policy will cap them, where they can't raise $6,000, that it will stay at what we make. And a lot of people, you have to make $91,000 to be middle class in the city of Seattle.
I think most of us are low income.
Yeah, a lot of us are low income. That's what they consider. So I just, listen, you're gonna hear it, it doesn't work, landlords, we'll see.
And Violet, you addressed the, like, it would, would it affect the number of rental homes that are built? The other question that comes up is, the other point that comes up is, it will reduce the quality, meaning the, the rental homes will not be maintained very well. What do you say to that? And also Devin?
I just think it's a tactic that they use. I mean, who wants to rent out crappy, there are slum lords running around in the city of Seattle. We know some of them. But the thing is, the quality of the place, that's why I think Seattle is really good, because we have an inspection, you know, we have this inspection program up to, that goes in places like that. I just don't believe it. Listen, right now, you're gonna hear all kinds of stuff, that rent control does not work. It's baloney. I say it really nicely, it's baloney. We've, we've heard it, they have meetings about this, how do we squeeze more money out of the tenants? That's what they talk about. I should know, I infiltrate some of them. I can't do that anywhere, because they know who I am now, so.
You know, I would also say, there's a couple of things in that, you know? A, the landlord lobby, they, they have really good PR people, right? They can, they can spin things however they want it. But, I mean, in terms of it limiting supply, you know, again, there, 2018, you see Berkeley research study that says that that's basically not true most of the time. You can also look at a place like Manhattan, you know, the densest city in the country, or San Francisco, or sorry, the densest borough and biggest city in the country. San Francisco, the second densest city in the country, both of them have rent control. As a former San Franciscan, I can tell you, go look at Soma, go look at the Fillmore, go look at Midmarket, the Castro, they're, they're building. We just have this really skewed perception in Seattle, because we're building the most. But if, if that were, if the conventional wisdom were true, that if all you have to do is build to get us out of this crisis, we would be winning, and we would have, we would have cheaper rents, or our rents wouldn't have spiked. You know, additionally, if it were true, they're never gonna do it, because it's not gonna help the investors who are investing in these properties. If they, you know, do you want to build yourself out of making money if you're an ultimate capitalist? Probably not. You know? And, yeah, in terms of, you know, what Violet was talking about with, with landlords, you know, I would just say, like, yeah, I completely agree with that, you know? You know, again, it's the big ones that we're talking about that, that are completely ruthless. And, you know, that's why we need to, we want to get small landlords on our side too.
And if, I mean, just to add to what the two of you are saying, I mean, if you look at the graph, and I'm good at math and the graphs, I mean, the average rent in Seattle, if we had had rent control, is still about, you know, 1,300, 1,400. That's not cheap change, right? Okay, that's not. But now, if you look at the, the graph, I mean, it's like what it is right now. I mean, it's over, you know, 21, 22, whatever. That's, that's caught an absurd, okay? That's, and that's what we're talking about. Because if you look at it, I mean, that's why we're asking for rent control because realistically, we know, you know, what's possible for the people, but still. I mean, the actual average, you know, rent in Seattle is outrageous. And that's what Devin and Violet have said and continue to say. And that's why I'm glad all of you are here as we say, what do we need now? Thanks.
One thing I would like to add, I just forgot also, that ties into the, the high school students that were here for, for climate justice, you know, that during the, the New Deal in the 30s, that groups of business people came together and said that this would kill the economy. They're doing that right now with the Green New Deal too, they're saying that this will kill the economy. Guess what, the New Deal didn't kill the economy, right? And so they're trying the same tactics with rent control. So who are you gonna believe?
You gonna believe the 1%, or you gonna believe the 99%?
People.
And I appreciate Devin, you tying this to the question of the Green New Deal as well. And as, again, also as Violet was saying, right now, Seattle does not have rent control and right now, slum lords are thriving. There are so many tenants we hear from, my, my office hears from new tenants virtually every day who say that they're being exploited by their landlord. And these are not the, the kind of small and caring landlords who care about their tenants. But these are landlords who have, who may look small on paper, but when you sort of trace the financial, sort of, you know, the whole, the, the line that they follow, where their big corporation is divided into smaller, smaller and smaller and smaller corporations. So, you know, you have to go beyond what you first see and then trace the financial origins of many of these landlords. They're big corporations. So Carl Hagelin, for example, is one person, but it's a corporation because it's a corporate landlord corporation. And slum lords are thriving right now. And that's why, just to sort of add to what the panelists were saying, we believe that it's the same as minimum wage, meaning the, what the wage, wages are is not so much a, a function of supply and demand. Yes, supply and demand plays a role undoubtedly, but that's a minor component. The major factor that determines what wages workers get, especially the lowest-paid workers, is the balance of power between bosses and workers. Similarly, what rents people end up paying, what conditions renters have to face in their rental apartments, and how much they can hold their corporate landlord accountable, all of that depends on the balance of power. And right now, there is a deep imbalance. And that is why, even in the absence of rent control, even in the, even in the context of the rental laws of the city greatly favoring corporate landlords, you still see very, very badly maintained homes. We have seen so many homes that are mold-infested and roach-infested. And again, you know, this requires a fight. So I just also wanted to give, you know, just to throw, throw this out there. If you, if you're listening to this and if you are a tenant who is facing, who is being forced to live in a rental home with all these persistent problems and your landlord has not corrected those problems, please contact my office because we want to make sure the existing laws are enforced. We have, we have through our activism and movement building actually won many renters' rights victories in the last five, six years. So we, but we want to make sure they're enforced and laws are only as good as their enforcement. So please don't hesitate to contact us to, to talk about that. I really appreciate everybody staying here, but it is 8:23. Obviously, we're not gonna win rent control tonight. We have, we have a whole movement to win and we have to have a sober assessment of, you know, tonight was a huge victory for us and we should celebrate that. But we should also be sober about the challenges that lie ahead of us to continue building this movement. I mean, today, I was the only council member who is at this table. We are going to need to build a huge momentum to make sure that our voices are heard in City Hall and not those of the corporate landlords. And I really agree with Devin and others that we need to make sure we also systematically outreach to small landlords as well. We, we should outreach to many faith leaders who will support our struggle and also homeowners. You know, today, we had homeowners speaking in favor of rent control. So let's make sure that in the coming months, we very systematically do outreach to small business, progressive small business owners, progressive landlords, small landlords, homeowners, in addition to renters, so that we build a united movement. And in terms of concrete next steps immediately that we, we need to go to, which I hope you will all join me at, is on October 3rd. And please make sure you get one of these double-sided leaflets. On October 3rd, the city council as a whole will have a public hearing on the budget because from now until Thanksgiving, the city council will be primarily focused on the city budget. And every year, through the People's Budget Movement that we initiated through my office in 2014, we have won unheard-of victories because people got organized. So I would really urge you to join us on October 3rd at the public hearing. But very importantly, also come to the People's Budget Town Hall on October 8th. You know, it's a lot of events, it takes time, but movement building requires that kind of time. So I hope you will join us there. If you haven't signed up on our rent control petition, please do so because we want to be able to keep in touch with you. Today's incredible turnout is the result of the fact that we collected 12,000 signatures and everybody here, you know, has done, has done an incredible job collecting those signatures. So I am so grateful to everybody. Let's adjourn the meeting and then let's keep fighting. Because when we fight... When we fight... When we fight...